I think they're here to answer questions largely. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 8th, 2024 Board of Commissioners Working Session. The first order of business is a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of January 11th, 2024, and I so move.
Second.
Is moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We are going to move public comment to the end of the meeting so that the public has the opportunity to hear what's being discussed. Our first item tonight is a matter of unfinished business, and this is to discuss the single-use plastics and expanded polystyrene products ordinance. And if you recall, last month, we began the discussion. It seemed like there were questions from a number of commissioners, and we wanted to ask the esteemed members of our environmental advisory committee to be here this evening so that we could have a robust conversation and decide on next steps. So do, how do we want to handle this? Do folks want to just start asking questions? Do we want to go through the ordinance? How, what would you like to do?
Is it possible, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. So I'm Karen McGarry-Rosen. I'm the chair of the Environmental Advisory Council, and...
I'm Andrea Su. I'm EAC secretary.
So I know that there was some expectation that you wanted us to come last month, and unfortunately, I was not available to be here, but...
That's okay. We're all here now.
Yeah, so I did look at what was discussed last month, so I'd like to address that.
Okay.
And then if you have further questions, if that's okay with everybody, rather than you redo...
It's a good point.
Okay, cool. All right, so I've categorized it in sections, and it's not in any order of commissioner and what was brought up, et cetera. So as far as the, the use of the bags, so the point of the ordinance is to encourage folks to bring their reusable bags. Ninety-two percent of the over 600 people that responded to our survey already have reusable bags, and I know that there's been some discussion that, you know, we should be giving out bags, but a lot of people don't want bags because then you just get overloaded. I'm sure you may have seen the New Jersey articles where people have bags and bags and bags, because in Jersey, they have a ban on plastic bags and paper bags, so the only other option is those inexpensive, plastic-woven-type bags. And as I said, they just pile up, but the point is that you bring your reusable bag to the, to the store and then put your goods, whatever you're getting, into the reusable bag, and there's no cost to the taxpayer. We have the opportunity in our budget for, at the EAC, that we can subsidize bags for anyone who needs them. And the, if they come to any event that we're, that we are, that we are educating about, we can provide them at that time. They can go, they can take it with them. But again, most of the people that responded to the survey already have bags. Whether they use them is, you know, lower percentage than the fact that they already have them. So using your own bag is absolutely free to the taxpayers. There is no cost at all. The, as far as the environmental impact, as Farron said in the November meeting, there is plastic, microplastics in our Tukoni, Tukoni Creek here in Abington Township. There is a, in 2021, there is a link to their study that they did. So if anybody needs any information, we'll be happy to provide any links after. If we need an addendum, if that's allowed, you know, we can provide any information that we're discussing tonight. So, okay. There was a statement about whales. There was a whale photo in Farron's presentation, and I did ask Farron about that. He was unable to join us tonight, but I just, if I can read what he wrote, if that's okay. So I've been informed that there's a question about the photo of the whale included in my presentation from last year. That was in November. I apologize if there was some confusion or if anyone feels misled by that photo. It's of an art installation that represents the plastic ingested by whales. That was deliberate. We chose not to include an actual photo of a dead whale because it could be disturbing or troubling to some people. There are plenty of documentation of whales washing ashore completely filled with plastic, and several links are provided below, and again, I can provide that information. Research has found that plastic bags and other plastic film are one of the most prevalent types of plastic found in these cases, and with the citations below, happy to clarify any statistics or images in the presentation. I'd also be happy to promote photos of actual whales that died due to plastic ingestion, if anyone is curious, but again, the presentation uses an art installation as a visual, since such photos can get quite graphic. So just bringing that up. As far as education, we can, we had our presentation to the public, open to the public in October regarding the, the proposed ordinance, and I'm scheduled to do a presentation at the NAACP meeting in Will Grove, either this month or next month. Today, I took the time to go to some local businesses to help just have the, start the discussion and see what the, what the feel is. I can talk about, a little bit about that. We can do presentations in person and virtual on social media, as we mentioned in our November presentation. So as far as the fee is concerned, I know some people are on the fence about it on the board. So the, the best practice that Penn Environment has seen is to eliminate plastic bags, which will eliminate waste, eliminate the pollutants, the litter. It will not degrade the environment any longer. It's not going to get caught up into recycling plants. It's not going to get caught into clog, to clog drains, drains and encourage flooding. That's the best practice, to ban plastic bags, provide a compliant paper bag as an alternative with a fee. The point of the fee is to encourage people to, not to make the businesses charge a fee. It's not to make the residents have to pay a fee. The point of it is to not pay the fee and for them to bring their reusable bags. Again, free to the consumer and the taxpayer is to bring their own bags that 90% of them have already. So if no fee is imposed, there's no incentive to the taxpayers and bring the reusable bags, and then the environmental problem shifts from a plastic bag problem to, say, a paper bag problem, which is, again, what we're seeing in New Jersey. And New Jersey has a ban on plastic, a ban on paper, so then what's the alternative? There's no real encouragement because there's no fee to bring their own bags, which they probably do have in their car or in their home. As far as the health impacts, so there's carcinogens, neurotoxic chemicals. The plastics can be, cause birth defects, disruptions to endocrine system, can cause cancer, diabetes, reproductive disorders, neurological impairments, consumer reports, if anybody gets consumer reports. They had a big article in February for, you know, how not to eat plastic, like decrease your plastic intake. Let me just say, I'm a big fan of Wendy's, and I don't think I'm going to be getting chicken nuggets from Wendy's anytime soon because it's, they're like one of the highest items that you can eat with plastic contaminants. As far as recycling plastic bags and styrofoam, I did not find any source that recycles styrofoam. There are certain styrofoams that are recyclable in certain areas of the country, but not the styrofoam food containers. I couldn't find any source that styrofoam is recyclable as far as the food containers are concerned. So as far as the single-use plastic bags, they can be reused. They can be put into other products such as, you know, braiding it for people who don't have, that are homeless, that are, because they're waterproof, they're lightweight, they can roll them up. But very few people, and, and they are recyclable, not at curbside by the township, right, but at some of the businesses, such as Giant Acme, they have a bin when you first walk in, you can drop off your recyclable bags. But the majority of the single-use plastic bags is about 16, 6% only get recycled. I don't know where I have that fact, but 6% get recycled, and there's millions and millions that don't. As far as, one last thing. There was a comment about somebody shopping order at Walmart, and they didn't have any bags for a $200, $300 order. I would assume that that was groceries, but, and I would also assume that the taxpayer did drive to the actual store rather than taking public transportation, but, you know, with $200, $300 order, I know when I go food shopping, I get a $200, $300 order. Of course, I bring my own bags, but, you know, my, my thought is if they drove to the store, they probably just put, and there was no bags when they checked out, they probably just put the items back in the cart and pushed the cart to their car, maybe dumped all their stuff in the car. If they had reusable bags in their vehicle that they didn't bring in, they put them in reusable bags and then bring them into their house. So I think that is all I have. Yes, so...
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah.
I'm going to open it up for comments or questions. Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thanks for following up.
Sure.
We appreciate it. You had mentioned that you spoke with some local businesses.
I did.
And you said something about you could tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah.
Are you able to?
I can.
Thank you.
So I have a list of businesses that I went to. I'm not going to say where they were, but I did go to two restaurants, well, I should say, I went to 12 businesses today. I only could speak to a manager or owner at four of the businesses. The other eight businesses did not have a decision-maker on site. Two of the four that I spoke with were restaurants, and the other two were just general shops. So for the restaurants, they currently have plastic bags at the one restaurant. The other restaurant has paper bags. So the, and both of these restaurants, if you sit in and you have, you know, a doggy bag to go home, they give you a styrofoam container, but if you get takeout, they give you plastic or they have the paper container. And when I asked, you know, why do you have one versus the other, and they didn't know the answer. So when I, which I wish I would have brought the, their responses with me, because I took a paper, you know, it was a discussion, it wasn't, you know, an online survey. So I, one of them said, you know, we, we, I should say, almost three out of four said, we knew that this is coming, and we will comply. Thank you. Remember the word. We will comply. We will adapt. That's what, the direct quote. We will adapt. So for them, obtaining the compliant bags, the fee, there was not overly well, overwhelming support of the fee. There was not any overwhelming against. They said, you know, if that's what it is, people could, they did say that a lot of the time, either they're offering a bag and not automatically placing their products in the bag, or folks are bringing their own bag. So I know four is not a lot. I understand that, and I'd be happy to follow up with more small businesses. Again, we just started this small business outreach, but again, there is not overwhelming against from what we have gotten so far. So, and again, some of them have already converted. You know, one place, they have another location in Philadelphia where there is a ban in effect, so they have been using up what they have currently, and then will just order the same that the Philadelphia branch has. Okay.
My, my, my comment is we, we need to speak with more places and see how prepared they are and all that kind of stuff, but I'm not surprised at all by businesses seeing this type of thing potentially coming, but obviously, there's a lot for us still to consider, and there's a lot of good information in what you shared today.
Yeah.
And I think I knew that about the whale.
We're prepared, we're prepared to educate and provide plenty of notification and information for, for all businesses and residents. The key, I think, is not to blindside everyone, and we recognize that, and we know, we've learned lessons from other municipalities.
Yeah.
Where people were shocked and they weren't prepared and were upset, so our, that's not our intention, and we certainly are prepared to, you know, provide the education necessary through all, all media and, you know...
Can you remind the board, I mean, if the ordinance were to pass, there was time built in before it would go into effect. Can you remind the board of what that time duration was?
Yes. We, and that was something that we were willing to...
I feel like it was six months or something like that.
Yeah, it was something, if we, we basically, roughly, it was basically six months of notification and, and, you know, providing official notices to businesses. We would provide all the necessary, you know, notifications to the businesses so that they can, you know, basically advertise on their windows, you know, what's coming, and so that it's not, you know, people aren't surprised, and, and we're happy to do that kind of outreach. We will do all the legwork for that.
And I guess, I know this is not on the docket to be, to be voted on at, at this point, but, you know, from the other townships that have already passed this, what they, the feedback that they received was to start after the new year. Don't start it before the holidays, so, because that's a terrible time, right, for people to get used to it. So they, at this point, perhaps modifications should be done on what we already drafted so that there's a longer runway, so that we can provide the education, the businesses can adapt. You know, one of the discussions with one of the small businesses about a fee, and the response was, and I said, you know, the thing is, the, the idea is put a sign, communicate with the, the residents that this ban is going into effect. Put a sign on the door saying, don't forget your bags, something, you know, catchy, so that they understand that when they're going in, they're not having that at the point of sale where they're taking their credit card out or taking their cash out, that they find out, oh, you know, it's a 15 cent charge for a bag that they forgot to bring, which is sitting in their car. So that was, you know, and then once I explained that, and they said, well, as long as, you know, there's education and this and that, I mean, we, we can't control out of, you know, out of township resident or out of township people from purchasing in the township, right? But if they're in their township like Cheltenham, who already has a bag banned in effect, this should be, not be a surprise, because they're probably doing the same thing with their local stores. But there was something else I was going to say. Oh, you know, one thing that's not in the memo that I didn't think of until today is the bags that prescription medication comes in. So that's not excluded, which means it would be a 15 cents charge for each prescription, and I think that that should be excluded. So I, I want you to consider, you know, that change, and it's, you know, an oversight that we didn't think of it at the time, but as I was going, you know, from business to business today, and I was like, I was, I wrote on my, my paper, like, check the ordinance to see if prescription drug bags are excluded from the ban, from the, from being charged a fee if you go that route. I, I think that that, that would be inappropriate to be walking out with your, you know, your bottled prescription drug out of the, out of the pharmacy, but...
Commissioner Spiegelman, then Bowman, then Zico.
Thank you, President Heckler. Karen, actually, this is a perfect transition from your mention of Cheltenham and neighboring municipalities. So in the memo that, that was provided to us in our packet.
Yeah.
You listed a number of municipalities that have had this ban for a while.
Yes.
The, the implementation dates were all sort of basically 2019 through 2022. The only one on that list that is a direct neighbor of ours is the county of Philadelphia, but as you said, Cheltenham, and I believe several, as I recall.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sorry for not knowing this off the top of my head. Several of our other neighbors are, you know, have either begun or are preparing to begin implementation.
Correct.
Do you happen to recall, and not to put you on the spot, but besides Cheltenham, which of those other, oh, thank you. Perfect. Perfect. I know Upper Moreland was, okay, yeah. Yeah, so we're...
I know Lower Moreland does not have one. They're attached, connected to us. Ambler, which is not attached to us, right? They, they have a ban in effect also.
You said Lower Moreland does not, or...
Lower Moreland does not right now, but they are working toward...
It's interesting, because some of the businesses in Lower Moreland, including Ace Hardware and the CVS, have already switched over and are charging for paper bags.
And, and, you know, they're, they're big businesses, right? So if they have stores in townships that already have the ban, they're probably working through their inventory and then just replacing it with something that's compliant.
Yeah. So, and I believe is, I know Upper Dublin doesn't have one now. Are they working on one? Did I hear that? Or I, and again, I really should know this, and I apologize for not knowing it, but...
No, 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 that's...
It's actually on the map, actually. I don't have a copy of myself. On that, it should represent ones that are in progress or in discussion.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, okay, and it's, yeah, it's, you know, they're in pro, yeah, so they're in progress.
They're in progress.
So really, we are, you know, we're close to being completely surrounded, including some areas where I think a lot of, you know, for, a lot of folks who, who choose to take their Abington dollars elsewhere for shopping, go to shop.
Right.
Or already, I mean, you know, I can tell you, I've, I'm, I've been trying to implement this, you know, myself. I'm, you know, cycling through all the old plastic bags and paper bags that we have, and, and, you know, sometimes, sometimes I forget, and I, you know, maybe I'll set up a little 15 cent, you know, swear jar every time I need to get a paper bag, but, I mean, yeah, I think this is something that everybody around us is going to be very used to. So the customers in, in, for Abington small businesses will, they'll be acclimated to this from just about anywhere else they might shop.
Right.
And I really, I mean, I, obviously, it's no secret, I've been a proponent, a supporter of this for a long time. I really like that you brought up the point about the little, the little usually white paper bags that prescriptions come in.
Right.
Again, didn't, didn't think of that, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's no law that, that needs to be, that it needs to be in a prescription, you know, it needs to be in a bag. Same with alcohol. There's no law saying what the baggage needs to be. Alcohol may be, you know, a little bit different because, you know, it's, you can bring your own bag, but I, I mean, I just feel, you know, a little, you know, off with the, the prescription drugs and then walking out with the...
I think that exclusion may, no, I think that exclusion makes for a gentler transition. And ultimately, this is about, this is about behavior modification. It's about getting, you know, getting used to things.
Right.
So, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
It's about reducing waste. It's not about eliminating plastic altogether. I mean, that's one thing that needs to be made clear, because a lot of people react when you're banning some material altogether. The other thing I wanted to add was that, you know, to bridge the gap of, you know, people forgetting or just developing a new habit, we also propose to have these bag bins that stores can host essentially, but it's like kind of a consumer-operated, you know, sort of give a bag, take a bag. So, you know, people who have an abundance of, like me, I have an abundance of, like, reusable bags that I don't use.
Right.
And I can certainly donate those into the, into the, you know, bin exchange, if we want to call it that, and, you know, establishments can choose to do that as to kind of bridge that gap. Like, I forget bags sometimes, too, but it's something that we can implement.
For sure.
Thank you again.
Yep.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yeah, hi. Thank you for your presentation, and I wasn't here last month for the initial conversation about this.
You mean, you didn't watch it on, on the video? Is that what you're saying?
I didn't see.
Sorry.
Didn't see.
Twice, like I did last night?
But my gut instinct when I heard about this was to support it, and certainly, I trust Karen and her group implicitly, so, you know, you only forget once, you know, you only go to the Sea Isle Acme and don't have a bag one time.
It's true. It's true.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Commissioner Zepone.
Okay, I have a couple of comments to make. Now, this ban that you're proposing, is that going to be for, like, hefty trash bags and all plastic bags?
It is not. No.
Well, then, what's the difference?
Well, the heft...
You're banning one trash bag. A hefty bag is a, is a plastic trash bag. Okay? So what's the difference?
So a single-use plastic bag that, that you pick up from a retailer, not for your trash, that you transport a good that you buy at a store to bring it home, that's what we're talking about, plastic bags. The single-use plastic bags that all the retailers have, I should say, most of the retailers. Some of the retailers I went today, they already had paper bags, but it does not include, the ban does not include trash bags at your own house.
Now, I think you, you said several times, okay? As you can tell, I'm, I'm opposing this, okay? I'll tell you right now.
Yeah.
You keep saying about these reusable bags. They don't cost anything. They're free. If you don't have them, you have to go buy them.
Right.
We didn't have them. My wife went out and bought six of them, and I, I don't know, maybe $5 a piece, so there is a fee for that. You have to go buy them.
I understand.
If you don't have them, you have to buy them.
Right. And we're willing to take part of our budget to pay for any reusable bags that any resident needs in order to be ready for this ban to go into effect, and we can provide those. Again, 90, 90% of the people who responded to our survey said that they already have bags. For the small businesses that I went to, they said people already bring their bags or they say, you know, we don't need, I don't need a bag. So when I say that there's no cost, there's no continuous cost. The, if you have purchased the six reusable bags and you continue to use them, there's no additional cost to reuse the same bag over and over.
But there is an initial cost. You have to go buy them.
If you don't have them, yes.
Right. So there is a cost. Okay. Can you tell me how many human beings died from plastic bags? You're, we're talking whales and stuff. How many human beings, you have any record, any data on that?
I don't have, I don't have that information right now.
Okay. So also, it's an additional revenue base for stores like, last weekend, I was at Walmart, 15 cents for a paper bag. Home Depot now, okay? So that's, so these companies are making more money.
Yep.
Okay? And for any residents that want to continue to use them bags, you get a box of 1,000 of them at Sam's Club for $40.
You shouldn't have to buy them.
Well, I'm just saying, there's people that use them for all different things, okay? So if you want to keep using them, go to Sam's Club, buy a box of 1,000 for $40, which I did. So that's all the comments I have for now.
Commissioner Schreiber.
So I'm struggling with this one a little bit because I do know that we need to reduce plastic. However, this is not the plastic that I use a lot of. Like, my plastic recycling bin is very full. I use a lot of plastic. I'm, you know, a bad offender on this. And so I guess my concern, and I know all these other municipalities are doing this, but I don't know what the studies have shown on how effective they really are in reducing plastic waste. I know that, and I'm sure you've seen this, the study that everybody's talking about right now in New Jersey where it's three times as much plastic where they banned it. And my thought is because people are using other things that are plastic, so it's really increasing the plastic. So like, you know, everything that I use, unfortunately, comes plastic. I eat a lot of takeout. I'll, I'll be honest here, I'm not proud of this, but I don't cook a lot, and so even today, I went to a store in another municipality to a deli.
How dare you? No, I'm just kidding.
I know. I was there, and I was hungry, so they gave me food in plastic that was put in a paper bag, small lunch bag, and charged me for that paper bag, which was a lunch bag, and it just seems so wrong because the plastic is what's really bad there. I wasn't getting charged for those plastic containers. I was getting charged for that little tiny paper bag.
Right.
So it seems like there's not a lot of consistency and study to make this really effective so that it's the healthiest thing possible. The plastic bags that we're talking about are the ones I actually do recycle. I use them over and over again when I can. And so, but some of those other things I don't. My cat litter comes in plastic. I can't reuse that plastic container, so that just goes, you know, into the trash, basically, well, the recycling can. So hopefully, somebody's doing something with that and recycling it.
Right.
So that's why I'm struggling with this. The, yeah, and so things like this New Jersey study, can you talk about?
I can.
Why those things? Okay.
Yes. So Farron, who was here in November and did his presentation, he, we had our Single-Use Plastic Coalition meeting with all of southeastern Pennsylvania on Monday. He made a statement, which I recorded. He made a statement, which I recorded. And then I said, "Can I play the recording for the Board of Commissioners?" And he said, "No." "But I will write you a statement" that talks about the New Jersey ban. So, let me start... Again, this is what Farron wrote. And I'd be happy to forward this to, if needed, for documentation purposes or what have you. So, let me start out by saying that I strongly disagree with the findings and the conclusions of the recent FEDONA study on the effectiveness of the New Jersey plastic bag law. From an environmental and public health perspective, plastic bags are the worst option for the environment, and the plastic bag bans are effective tools at reducing waste and pollution. The FEDONA study was commissioned and paid for by the plastics industry, which doesn't automatically invalidate it, but it is important to understand that the research... Where the research is coming from. While being industry-funded does not make it suspect, what is suspect is their methodology. FEDONA looking mainly at the supply side of the bags, like vendors and distributors, rather than the actual demand or the use of the bags, and instead of relying on data. They used only interviews and conversations with industry insiders. Their research didn't study consumer behavior, didn't look at litter, and didn't consider the end-of-the-life impacts of the various bag options. It doesn't provide the most accurate accounting of New Jersey's plastic bag ban. Our national partners at USPIRG, P-I-R-G, Education Fund, the Environmental America Research and Policy Center and Frontier Group recently put out a study that looked at the case studies of plastic bag bans at the local and state level from around the country, including New Jersey and Philadelphia, and found that plastic bag bans are actually really effective. Five such laws, including the states of New Jersey and Vermont and the cities of Philadelphia, Portland, Oregon, and Santa Barbara, Pennsylvania, eliminate over 6 billion single-use plastic bags per year combined. Especially when done well, laws like these are good for the environment. Even accepting the methodology and findings of the FEDONA study, it's fairly easily to disagree with their conclusions. Their issues are with poor-quality reusable bags that can't be reused enough to make them environmentally worth it, and their assertion that people don't actually reuse higher-quality reusable bags that many times. Their thinking being that since these bags are heavier-duty and often made with synthetic fibers or other materials, if they're not being reused, then they have a greater material and environmental cost than single-use plastic bags. Their conclusion is to say, because of these issues, that let's just stick to the conventional plastic bags. And while we agree that there is a ton of bad plastic bag alternatives out there, like thicker plastic bag films, our conclusion and the conclusion of our report is very different. Our report, like FEDONA's, found that there have been loopholes in plastic bag bans around the country, except we outline ways to close them. A benefit of Pennsylvania being behind our neighbors on this front is that we can see where they have gone wrong and how to do it better. So, rather than say, "People aren't reusing bags enough, so let's go back to plastic bags" that are so damaging to our environment and climate, we recommend designing plastic bag bans to prevent bad alternatives through strong definitions and to include paper and reusable bag fees so that people are encouraged to bring their own bags from home. Penn Environment has model legislation and actually addresses these issues. The definitions we recommend prevent many of the bad reusable bags. The plastic industry study talks about and believes are such an issue. We define plastic bags to include any bags made from plastic film, regardless of how thick they are. We also define reusable bags to require certain materials and require stitched-on handles to ensure quality. We also include bag fees for any alternatives provided by retailers to encourage reuse. New Jersey's law, which is what the FEDONA study looked at, doesn't include these fees and so doesn't have an incentive for people to bring their own bags from home. Studies show that a small fee drastically increases the proportion of people bringing their own bags. So, rather than say these laws don't work, we believe that designing a plastic bag ban well can completely avoid these issues. A well-designed ban can eliminate the worst environmental option, the plastic bag, can prevent the use of poor substitutes with intentional definitions, and can encourage people to do the best thing for our environment and reuse their own bags over and over again. So, even if we completely accept the findings of the FEDONA study and ignore the issues with the methodology and provenance, we can still avoid the issues that they outlined by crafting a strong plastics ordinance. Laws like these are incredibly effective at reducing plastic pollution and litter. A ban in Abington could eliminate over 16 million plastic bags each year. That's again for the 58,000 residents in Abington Township. To put that into perspective, laid end to end, they stretch over 3,000 miles, enough to snake from Abington all the way to the Pacific Ocean. Those bags banned would also eliminate the over 87,000 gallons of oil needed to produce that plastic. These laws have a concrete impact and remove plastic bags that can't be easily recycled, are made from fossil fuels, litter our communities, and break into microplastics that pollute our air, water, and are increasingly being linked to health impacts in humans and wildlife. I know that was a lot. Sorry.
I'll be quick. Go ahead. Sorry, my mic. Oh, good. I'll make it easy and quick. Can you... My request is, can you compile a summary of your highlights? Lowlights? The good points, the bad points? Forward it to me. You can send it by my email. My email's on the township address, the township website. I'd like to further take a look at the issue. So, if you don't mind doing that, I'd really like to further look at the issue. Thanks.
Commissioner Martin, and then Commissioner Spiegelman.
Hi, I was wondering, in listening to your presentation, I didn't hear a component about educating the Abington Township residents about the importance of this. And getting, adapting people to change their behaviors, if you can gain people to have understanding of why is important? Like, how the summary of that last statement of all those things you listed?
Yeah.
I know people who... Younger people hear it more, are more in tune to it. Some older residents may not be, perhaps, or just generally, the general public, anyone not having an understanding of why we should do this. You know, people hear like, "Oh, it's another thing that needs to be changed," or "Why we gotta do this now? Can't even bring a bag to the store," you know? And, I mean, you know, get a bag after I purchase something because at times, people feel it's a reward, it's something that's part of the purchase.
Yeah.
Getting a bag to place your items in. You know, when Aldi started, that was the weirdest thing. People went there and you didn't have a bag. "What is this? You're giving me a bag?" Well, we discount our prices so we don't have to do those kinds of... You know, it was built into that. So, now everyone does it. They expect when you go to Aldi, you bring your own bag.
Right, right.
So, I think a part of this ordinance is should be some kind of education component that's part of the funding, to have a pamphlet of why this is important and that you can give to the business owners or, you know, the individual Abington Township residents to gain buy-in of why this is important so we can get compliance if we do go this way.
So, I don't know. We used to have a rain barrel program in... With the EAC. And as part of our education, we would hold workshops approximately six or seven times a year, usually during the rain barrel season, which is, you know, spring to fall. And, you know, half of the presentation was about why do you need a rain barrel? And I guess the education for this ordinance, if it gets passed, is not going to be just about the ordinance. It's going to be half about why we're doing this, right? So, we... When we came, and you may not have been here in November, when we did our presentation, the... Most of it was about the why and less was about the ordinance and the draft and, you know... But there was pieces about the ordinance. There was pieces about the education. But we can absolutely... And we've drafted a lot of things, graphics, that we plan on using for social media and... The presentation. So, if we need to, you know, run them by anybody in the township before it gets, you know, put out, we can do that as well, if necessary.
Vice President Behe.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, not for tonight. But the definition of the compliant paper bag is very, very detailed and specific.
Yeah.
And I do appreciate that kind of detail. But I don't understand what the options are when it comes to paper bags. So, if you can provide some education about the alternatives to that definition, like what other paper bags are out there? Why would you go with your definition as opposed to other classes? I'm assuming it's that type because there's other classes of paper bags that could be used that you don't want us to allow to be used. So, I'd appreciate more information on that so we can decide as a board what the appropriate level of...
That I do not have the answer to.
That's okay.
But I can get it. 40% recycled materials for paper bags. But as far as, I know with paper bags, you know, they use virgin trees. But, you know, it kind of offset when you use 40% or some percentage of post-recycling as well. But, you know, we can reach out. We do have resources that we got from Farron, who was here in November, of where these... Where the businesses can get those types of items so that, you know... And they are available. It's not like we pulled it out of the sky and said, "40%, let's land here."
It was clearly based on facts and what's available.
It is actually based on like a Forest Stewardship Association, which is based... This definition was based on, I believe. But we'll certainly have a more, you know... We'll confirm that answer. But basically, my understanding is that this definition is based on, as approved by, you know, Forest Stewardship... I don't know if it's like a council or organization. But they defined it, and we basically adapted that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Spiegelman and Commissioner Brown. And I'm going to be mindful. We still have two other presentations we've got to get to this evening.
I absolutely bear the mind. Thank you, President Hecker. I definitely look forward to your answer to Vice President Behe's excellent question.
Yeah.
I concur with Commissioner Lady Martin's comment about the importance of education across, you know, across generations and demographics and whatnot. Because certainly, reaching out on social media is going to exclude, you know, a lot of older folks.
And we are counting on the commissioners to promote it in their newsletters for those who send it out.
As you probably know, you can... If you need a graphic design volunteer to help, I'm right here. Following up on Commissioner Brodsky's comment, I definitely would like to receive a copy of Farron's statement. But if he... If Farron wouldn't mind also providing links to the Perg Research, the Public Interest Research Group?
Yeah. There's links throughout here, you know? Throughout the statements.
Great, no, that would be great. Thank you, thank you so much.
I think we should assume that everybody should receive the information.
Yes.
Yeah. Is there somebody that we should be sending that to?
Tell it to the manager.
Okay, sure.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you, President Hecker. I think one of the things that's going to be crucial to the success if this ban goes into effect is making the reusable bags readily available.
Yeah.
I know you've mentioned that the EAC has these reusable bags that would be available.
Well, we have funds to purchase the reusable bags. We haven't purchased them yet. Because we don't have any... We don't have a ban yet.
Have you... Got it. Have you forecasted how... What that budget would look like initially? And then any budget increases as adoption increases over time? And then have you thought about any larger businesses in the township supplementing with the sponsorship of these free bags?
Mm-hmm.
I know we mentioned kind of like a give-a-bag, take-a-bag, which is kind of like more organic, you know?
Yeah.
Kind of the program. But I think, you know, coordinating with perhaps the school district, you know, other places that are frequented by, you know, a majority of the residents in the township where these bags could be available.
Yeah.
And then maybe having an online resource where... You know, because, you know, businesses, sometimes they produce swag, you know, or some other items and they'll, you know, produce these reusable bags. So, if there's an online resource where, you know, these bags could be found, I think that's going to be important as well.
Sure, understood. So, I don't have the answer to your question either about the budget and how much we anticipate needing that part. We don't have either, but...
Understood.
Come back.
Commissioner Henry.
By and large, I do support this. I've shopped at Aldi and Costco forever. This has been, you know... We don't always need bags. This has been, you know, we don't always need bags, but I am concerned about one area. Are, how, have there, has there been any investigation into how this might affect like loss, like the law enforcement issues or loss prevention, like shoplifting? Is there any concern about that, like people walking in with bags, carrying bags, putting things in bags, walking out without the bags? Is that something that ever comes up in this conversation? Because...
It actually did come up in conversation with one of the businesses today.
Thank you.
So they said that recently they have had an increase in theft when, you know, this particular business, it doesn't have, it's not a restaurant, so, but they did say that people are coming in, as you say, with the bags. I said, you know, are they coming in with them collapsed? Are they coming in with them open? And they said both, and we're following them throughout the store. They're calling the police. I'm sure the police, you know, has this information as well, which business it is. So, you know, that was a concern for this one business that did express that. I mean, I don't know, I don't have an answer for that. I mean, I can, you know, go back to our resources with the Coalition and with Farron to see, you know, are they having this issue in Philadelphia with the ban and see what they say, but I don't have an answer tonight, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Henry. I want to thank you both for being present tonight and providing some important detailed information. I think dialogue was good. We'll await your response to some of the requests this evening, and then we'll keep the dialogue going.
So would there be an expectation that this would be on the agenda next month or no?
I think we haven't decided that yet.
You haven't decided, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
But we will stay in constant contact.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments at the end. We're not actually taking any action. Ms. Kubel. We're now going to go to new business, and the first item of new business is a presentation of the preliminary major land development application, LD-2301, for the location at 711 Fox Chase Road, Jenkentown, which is a former St. Basil's property. And before we start the presentation, Mr. Manfredi, can you remind the board where this is at in the process and what happens after tonight's conversation?
Yes, Mr. President. So after this evening, and once the presentation is completed and all the information has been gathered, we'll schedule this for a future meeting of the Board of Commissioners, depending upon where it goes. It could come back to another working session.
I'm sorry, I'm distracted.
Me too. Are you talking around? It's okay. Okay.
Yeah, there'll be an opportunity for comment, but I ask that you respect the proceedings and the presenter. Please continue, Mr. Manfredi.
Once the applicant has completed their presentation here this evening, once the board has had sufficient information, whether it needs to come back to a next working session or go to the Board of Commissioners for a vote, there would be a vote on the preliminary land development plan. Once the preliminary land development plan is voted upon, it would then go back to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
In final, for final review, and then come back again to the board for final.
So there's going to be...
That timeline is completely dependent upon...
On what happens, yeah.
Yes.
So there's going to be multiple opportunities for ongoing input and discussion based on the process as you've articulated it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Allison Zaro on behalf of Toll Mid-Atlantic LP Company, Inc. This evening I have with me Brian Thieran from Toll, Jeff Madden from ESC Consultants, who was our civil engineer for the project, and Sandy Coza from Bowman, which is the traffic engineer for the project. So as Mr. Manfredi indicated, we're here tonight to present a preliminary land development plan to you for the St. Basil's site. I know that the board is somewhat familiar with this site, and I'll try to orient this a little, toggle this a little bit, if you give me one second. There we go. This site is approximately 46 acres. It's located at 711 Fox Chase Road, and it was previously the subject of a rezoning before this board to add an overlay district, the age-restricted carriage home overlay district. We were also before you in July of last year regarding a specific conditional use for this property to allow a sewer line connection in the riparian buffer zone two. But what I'm showing you right now is, and it's not perfectly on the screen, so maybe I can, I don't want to, maybe I can just reduce it slightly so everybody can see this in one sheet. Give me one second. So the site has its main frontage on Fox Chase Road, and let me just ask one question. Does this have the pointer thing so I can make sure everybody sees it on the big screen? Okay, perfect. So frontage on Fox Chase Road, and we are proposing a main entrance that would be a two-way intersection into the community. There's also an emergency access proposed on Fox Chase Road. 150 carriage homes with clubhouse, pool, associated stormwater management facilities, parking, et cetera. There are several stormwater management basins proposed throughout the site with the, what I'll call the rear portion of the site, has a Pennyback Creek Tributary that has existing woods back there to remain. There is an extensive buffer that's shown along the various property lines. There's a 125-foot setback that's required. Within that setback, we are required to have a 40-foot wide buffer, and based on conversations with the neighbors, we have slid that buffer in since this plan was done. This is sort of the overall concept to show you, but our actual land development plan has that closer to our houses, and then there's an 80-foot, 85-foot wide area to the rear of that, which allows for a green area as requested by many of the neighbors. So we did appear before the Planning Commission in December to present the plan, and they did make a positive recommendation on it. We also discussed several waivers that we are requesting at that time, which we're happy to go through with you tonight, and they did also recommend those waivers. But I will take a pause here before we would go into more technical items and just see if anyone has any questions at this time. No? Okay. So...
A public comment is at the end of the working session, Mr. Rooney. You should know that by now.
So we are requesting several waivers, Panone's most recent review letter is dated November 13th, 2023, which lays those out. The first three waivers are really what I'll call technical waivers, planned waivers, in the sense that your ordinance specifically requires that all information within 400 feet of the property be shown in terms of tax parcel numbers, existing utilities, et cetera. Given the area where this site is located and the extent of this site, we are proposing to show the immediate surrounding area as shown on this plan and are requesting a waiver to go out to the full 400 feet. The next waiver is more of a substantive waiver, and I will have Jeff Madden explain that to you. That is really the main focus, the main item we wanted to focus on tonight, and that relates to sidewalk and curb on the frontage of the site.
Thank you. Good evening, Jeff Madden, ESC Consultants. As Allison said, the one waiver is for sidewalks to be six inches from the property line. And just to give you step-by-step of the area, the area that I have shown right now, which is closest to Kirkwood Avenue, has an existing curbing, and right behind the curbing is the sidewalk there. That goes pretty much to the entrance of our property, and then from the entrance of our property to the emergency access that we're proposing, there is no sidewalk existing and no curbing existing. And then, again, from the emergency access to the end of our property, there is existing curbing, and there is existing sidewalk, again, located right up against the curb. So our waiver request is to have sidewalks along the whole frontage of the property, but the information that's shown on the plan and both the, again, I'll start from the south, is to have the existing sidewalk remain or be rehabbed in the same location. Add sidewalk between the road and the ultimate right-of-way, which is in front of the proposed basin. So install sidewalk along that portion of the property roughly halfway between the road and the buffer itself, and the basin itself. And then, and then in the third area, keep the existing curbing and keep the existing sidewalk where it is, which is roughly right up against the curbing itself. There was a request by the Planning Commission to try to mitigate that a little bit and take the sidewalk along the majority of the frontage as much as we could and push it as far back from the road as possible, as closest to the right-of-way, to comply with as much as we could of this ordinance. And then on the, on the top portion and the bottom portion, we would then have to neck down to meet the existing sidewalk that's up against the road itself. So that's the iterations of the waiver for this request.
Thank you. Mr. Manfredi, is Mr. Hassan present this evening? Perhaps we could ask him to provide his perspective before we ask any questions about that?
Cal, if you would please.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioner Hecker and Commissioners.
Good evening, Cal.
So we did take a look at the waivers being requested by the applicant, specifically what was just shared with the Commissioners now. From a functionality standpoint, we do not oppose to what the applicant is proposing. However, I reiterate and remind the applicant that if the Commissioners are to vote in favor of this, we will have to include a condition in either the resolution or even on the plan that whatever sections of the existing sidewalk are deemed to be in need of replacement or rehab, then the applicant will agree to go ahead and do so. Otherwise, from an engineering standpoint, a functionality standpoint, I do not oppose to their request with this waiver.
Thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
With any of the other waivers, or do you wish to weigh in on those?
So the other waivers are pretty much standard waivers. I do not really have any objection to any of them. For example, you have one waiver that talks about the existing features. They are providing enough information where we can gather the intent of this section. They talk about other sidewalk and curb sections, block length, which pertains to the internal of the project, drainage, which we have no engineering issues. The design that was submitted by the applicant, again, meets the intent of standard engineering practices. We do not have any objection to that. And then the other one pertains to design and construction of sewers. Preliminary, we have no issues with this, however, we will defer to the sewer department on making a final determination, and we will work with them and coordinate on coming up with a recommendation to the board at a future meeting if this project advances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have more that you wish to present?
Additional information on any of the waivers?
Yeah, yes, sorry.
I can, do you want me to keep going or...
I guess it would really be a question if, I mean, most of them, as Mr. Hassan said, are really technical waivers, so unless somebody had a question on them...
No, I just wanted to make sure we didn't cut your presentation off before we opened it up for comments and questions.
The only other thing I will mention is that there is an existing traffic signal at the intersection where we are proposing our new intersection, and we are proposing signal upgrades at that intersection as well as curb ramps. That particular application would be submitted after this plan advances. If it does, through preliminary, based on the change to the sidewalk location, we wanted to make sure that that was set before we submitted that application, but that would be part of this process as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the board wish to speak? Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, President Hecker. With the caveat that basically I take everything that Mr. Hassan says as divine, the proposed sidewalk waiver, if that's granted, would that render any part of the frontage without sidewalk? Yeah, I guess, Jeff, I don't know, whoever...
I just want to make sure that we're correct, that, continue a sidewalk. The difference is, and I just want to make sure I said the right thing, continue a sidewalk, the idea being that we have to tie back into the property. So this is really, we're providing the whole sidewalk, it's just about the location, where it's required by your ordinance, and then making sure it works across the site and ties back into existing sidewalk off-site.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for members of the board? Okay, so the idea, what? Oh, Commissioner Wainbridge, sorry, you could have raised your hand a little higher.
You had mentioned a Panone, looks like a review from November 13, 2023. I see in the packet there's another Panone review from November 17, 2023, and in that discusses issues, traffic, dimension requirements, utilities, landscaping, sight lighting, sidewalks and curves, stormwater management. Are those all, will comply?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the question I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's no further, we appreciate it, and we will determine next steps, and we will stay in touch.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. And then we'll get to our final presentation before opening up for public comment. Is this you, Deputy Chief Porter?
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Ashley, where are we at here? Is it smaller? See it?
Yes.
Good evening, President Hecker, members of the board.
Good evening.
We're here tonight to talk about the metered parking situation in the township. I'm sure probably most everyone in here is familiar with the pleorable condition it's in and has been in for several years now, and it's been declining. And just to give you an example, about half of our meters are down at any particular time in a township. All of our meters are old, they're no longer in production, we can't get parts for them. In fact, when they were purchased, they were purchased used, and the best we can tell that was over, yeah, we were shocked too, that was probably more than 20 years ago.
Wow.
Back when they changed from 10 cents an hour of parking to 25 cents. Right now, they're very manpower-intensive, it takes two individuals to go around, collect the money, count the money, deposit the money, things like that, so it's just, there's a lot going on there. So we have a couple of alternatives. We've been looking at this probably, I look at Manager Manfredi, probably for over three years now, we've been looking at alternatives and seeking options. And a couple of them are outlined here. First is, we could replace those meters at a cost of about $600 a meter now with new upgraded meters. Quick math runs out to around $52,000 plus dollars just for the outright purchase. Then there's monthly service fees and charges incurred because of the services and the networking that's involved with that. We can move to multi-space meters, which is similar to like a kiosk, where they would, we would need a few per block, and at that price, that would cost us probably around $60,000 out of pocket, and then we would still have monthly service fees and incurred charges at the township. And not to get too further into that one, because those numbers are outrageous, I think everybody would agree. The second alternative is what most of the country has moved to, and that's contactless payment. And what we're talking about here specifically, what the department's recommending, is perhaps considering Park Mobile as the option to move forward with. This remedies the ineffectiveness of our current meter with no initial investment to the township. In fact, this company will provide the signage that's needed for us on the initial outlay. We would have to pay if we want to zone any other areas for metered parking, that signage would be on us, but upfront, there's nothing, nothing involved with us. No maintenance costs, maybe periodic sign replacements, things like that, if they become damaged or unreadable. There's a user-based convenience fee, and that is charged back to the people parking in the township. And credit card transaction fees, which are paid by the township, and we can break this down. Are there any questions about the two alternatives before I move forward on that? Okay. There are several, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
The one I'm leaning towards, people do that at the time that they're going to park, or they already have to have like an account?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, ma'am.
Yeah, your mic's not on.
So people have to do this in advance of being there, or they do it as they go to park, and then they say, oh, it's one of these places where I have to join up, and they sit in their car and do it right there and then?
Yes, they can do it right there and then, and we have the option to do, there's a lot of variety here.
If somebody doesn't have a credit card with them, but they just have a phone...
I'll get into that in a little bit. Yeah, sure. We want to make sure there's plenty of options for people that don't have credit cards, people that don't have smartphones, we can address that. Management Manfredi?
You will typically go to an area, you'll see a zone, you'll have the app on your phone, you'll tap the app, it'll use your geographic information system or whatever on your phone, you'll punch in that number, you'll have already put your credit card information, and it will register...
No, I understand that, but if you don't do that, you either don't have a phone, you don't want to put your credit card in your phone, that's what I want to know. Okay.
There are several app-based solutions out there, contactless parking, and the question comes up, why Park Mobile? And typically, there's a lot to this, but they are the highest-rated provider nationwide. They have the most users nationwide. Our surrounding municipalities use it, and that's a big factor for us. Jenkentown's using it, Cheltenham just started it, Doylestown, all the major metropolitan areas, other areas in Pennsylvania, down to the shore and some of the resort areas. And the statistics are up there on the screen for you, and there's also no upfront cost to the township with this company. One thing I do want to point out, we did look at several different companies that provide this service, and there were some other good ones out there, but there are some hidden fees based in some of them that I don't think is fair to some of our residents, where we may save five cents of a charge to the consumer initially. The backside of that is, they charge more fees for their processing, so it's kind of a shell game in some aspects. Park Mobile, we've reached out to them several times on and off over the last three years. They've been consistent, they've been responsive, they have 24/7 customer service, not only for the township, but for a person that's using their system. So some of the next steps, if we want to move forward with, to change our parking system, we have to do something, is basically what we're saying here. If we want to go to this contactless payment, we would need to amend the township code, and this should, we're recommending a parking rate increase, and I'll give some comparisons here in a little bit. The township would need to approve a contract with the provider. Typically, that would be for three years upfront, and then annually or whatever we decide after that timeframe. To implement this, we typically run a 45- to 60-day lead time from the time that the contract's accepted to when it goes live. And even then, there's still a couple of options we have. We can remove the meters, the township can remove the meters and just put signs up, or we can keep the meters in place, which is what Jenkentown did, and it seems to be very effective, it seemed to be very happy down there, that they put stickers on the meters. The residents are used to seeing the meters, going to the meters, looking at the stickers, and right there has the information on there immediately. They won't have to walk around and look for a sign with instructions on how to make payment. Currently, our parking rate's 25 cents an hour. We propose considering raising that to a dollar an hour, and that helps offset the cost of parking enforcement, inflation, and this has been, at least since 1998, we know that that's what the parking rate has been. For reference, a very close municipality, perhaps just south of us, they've gone through three iterations, improvements, if you will, of their parking process, upgrades to their system, and since we've done our initial meter change 20-some years ago, and they're on their third revamping, if you will. By having this rate increase to a dollar an hour, we would hope that this would be a one-and-done for some period of time here to help cover any anticipated expenses, so we're not back in front asking the board, we're going, working through the solicitor's office to amend another ordinance to change parking fees. If we can do this now, I think it would be beneficial. So what Commissioner Schreiber was asking, no smartphone, they can call a toll-free number and make a payment over the phone. We can certainly provide information to call our records office during business hours directly and have someone speak to them in person. They don't have a credit card or debit card, they can use PayPal, they can connect to a bank account or use a prepaid card system. Some people don't have a bank account, and we realize that, so there's other prepaid cards out there, and the popular ones are Green Dot and Net Spend. cards out there, and the popular ones are Green Dot and Net Spend, how they can pay for these. Another big concern of ours was, how do we accommodate the seniors and needs and those exempt? Some people don't even know that there are residents and other personnel that are exempt from paying parking, and that's, you know, veterans, handicapped persons, former POWs and such. But at the township's discretion, we could issue parking permit stickers to those individuals, people that simply cannot afford it, or whatever, the terms and conditions are deemed as, through the township, and vetted by the solicitor for sure. So that way, we make sure that we're taking care of everybody and not unnecessarily charging someone that shouldn't be. To implement this, there's been several, this has happened all over the place, but there's several different business models out there, and very robust ones on how to go about this. And outreach to the business and community, business community and other stakeholders is paramount to us. That is, the businesses, we hear a lot of complaints from the businesses in different areas of the township, that the meters aren't working, that people just come and park in front of my business all day because you can't enforce it. And they are right. Right now, and I hesitate to mention this, but our meters on Eastern Road, as of today, none of them were working correctly, none of them. When it gets cold, the meters freeze up, when it warms up, they immediately default to free parking. And until we go there and discover that, I know I shouldn't have said that, until we discover that physically, they have to go there and manually reset them. So it takes an enormous amount of time. So these, the businesses, even the public is frustrated as well. Be a robust public information campaign, the installation of signage, obviously, as we do with most things, we probably insist that we have a very gracious grace period, if you will, and have some flexibility before that enforcement started. Then we would start the enforcement process, and then we would monitor the program and see if it needed adjusted. It's not a one-and-done. I think what works in some communities is not what works in all communities, and I think we need to stay on top of this to make sure that it works for Abington and our residents. I know that was quick.
That was good.
I can answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Do members of the board have any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Brown?
You said that dollar per hour rate would be locked in. Do we have an idea of how long that would be locked in for? Would it just be for the initial contract, or are we kind of going independent and saying, you know, five years, however long, 10 years?
Yeah, good question, Commissioner Brown. We can designate that as long as the board desires. If you want to make that dollar rate now, and it's in effect until we deem that it needs to be raised, that's fine. And if you want to break down on the actual cost, on who pays what, we can certainly talk about that. I have Sergeant LaRosa here, Shane LaRosa with me, and we actually have that broken down. So just to give you a little bit of background, if the board decides to set the parking rate at a dollar, the consumer's actually going to pay a dollar forty-six?
For the first hour.
For the first hour. The first hour, they pay a dollar forty-six. The township makes about 71 or six cents, 76 cents on that. Now, they only pay that dollar, that extra 40-some cents for the first hour, and then it's only a dollar thereafter, because there's a convenience fee, there's other fees involved. And some people have asked, well, certain townships are charging less, and they get away with that because they pass all those fees onto the consumer, onto the person parking. The township's actually going to pay the credit card, certain fees here, and we're going to pay the company to process this. So our finance department, who's already working very hard, all they have to do is receive the funds and the monthly reports to balance everything. So in two years, if we say, hey, this is not working, or it's working too well, we need to adjust these rates. I don't think we should look at this as a money-making proposition, maybe I'm wrong, but I think we do need to cover some expenses here. That's our biggest concern there. And quite frankly, the public's frustrated, and our residents deserve better. They deserve the convenience, the accessibility, the ability to move in and out of parking spaces without worrying about tickets, without getting tickets when the meter wasn't working, or being frustrated and scared to park because they don't know whether or not they can. Sorry for the long answer, but.
What do you want, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Winograd?
Thank you. I think this, I'm going to pivot off the last question, is that, has the department done a cost-benefit analysis on, is this really worth it? Are costs going to be covered? I think you had mentioned that it takes two people now.
Yes.
Right, to empty the meter count? Do we, can we do away with those employees? I mean, can we do away with those hours? You know, what are we looking at?
Yeah, so right now, we're actually using sworn personnel to escort a parking officer around, collecting money. It's kind of antiquated to pay a police officer to walk around while we collect the money and try to get it to a bank. Yes, we've looked at the numbers over the years. Our revenue has dropped significantly in the past several years for parking revenue. To give you some background on that, starting back in 2003, we were bringing in around $42,000 a year in parking revenue. In 2020, we're down into the $20,000 realm, you know, '21, we're dropped significantly. Now, some of that may be due to the personnel shortages that we have for parking enforcement, but majority of that's due to our meters being out of service. And as of today, we had a little bit over 60%, had our parking people check, 60% of our meters are down. So another thing we checked on is surrounding municipalities, and they don't want me to mention the name, so I won't, but maybe I referred to them earlier. Their parking revenue's up 90% since they implemented Park Mobile, 90%, and they've only had it up for three months. So it's the efficiency of it. And if you think of it this way, somebody comes to Abington Hospital and they say, you know what, I don't know if I'll need to be in the lab for an hour or three hours. They pay for three hours of parking and they're out of that lab in 20 minutes. They leave the parking spot, somebody else pulls in. It's not the meter telling them now that they have three hours to park. It now goes off the license plate, so when the next person pulls up, they have to pay for their parking. So it's just the way that the process works in that aspect too. So it's more efficient in that manner as well. So I don't know all the benefits to that, but yeah, we certainly have, and we think that it'll, that's why I said an ongoing evaluation is certainly in order.
And is it worth looking at which streets have parking meters now, and what should or which shouldn't? I would just think in today's retail climate, stores want cars in front, they want incentivized people to park in front of their stores to use them.
No, that's a great question. We have looked at that, and right now, before we go with any agency, and if we do go with Park Mobile, they will cover anywhere. They don't care if we have 87 or 800 parking spots. That is totally up to the board and the township, if you want to zone certain areas. And it may be applicable to different neighborhoods, and I'm not suggesting anything, but maybe areas around certain busy facilities, take the hospital or whatever, maybe there's parking fees for certain hours on a neighboring street where we're limiting parking now. And then off-business hours, there's none. Parking permits would still be permissible. I know I'm looking at Commissioner Spiegelman because he knows how heavily impacted his ward is.
Okay. Commissioner Schreiber?
You mentioned it just now. So the way it works, you were saying about the three hours, somebody pays for it. So is somebody driving around and they're looking at license plates? Like a police officer would be look, so if I only paid for one and I'm there for two hours, they look at my license plate and then they pull it up somehow to see if, how much I paid?
Yeah, there's different ways to do it, but typically, just on the very surface, the parking enforcement officer or a police officer has access to the administrative portion of the app. They go by ABC 123, and it says, they're good. ABC 124, they're expired parking, they would know right away. And then a citation could be issued, as we do in the past, or it could be printed in a handheld device, something like that.
Thank you, President Hecker. Deputy Chief Porter, it sort of goes without saying that your, the department and you in particular have earned my unconditional trust on anything related to parking. Two quick questions, sort of an ancillary timeframe-related question to Commissioner Brown's question. Separate, apart from the, any grace period, what would be the implementation time to get Park Mobile up and running in all of the metered areas?
From now, from today?
Like from the moment that it's approved, like?
Sure, well, we'd have to do the ordinance rewriting, it would be sent to the solicitor for them to vet, have to come back for the quarterly submission for the ordinance to be approved by the board. And then, once we enter into an agreement with the Park Mobile, probably two months before we get up and running, and then a grace period is what we would expect from there.
And my, one other question, without creating too much work for anybody, would it be possible to get a list or a map or whatever of all of the currently metered areas that Park Mobile would be taking over if this is approved?
Sure, and if there's someplace that any of the board members would like considered for, in their own ward, certainly, I think that's, that would be.
Yeah, I'm good for now over here, but thanks. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Porter. I actually don't think we would have to wait for the quarterly order, and I think if we decided to move ahead with this, we could put this on an agenda separate from the regular traffic safety stuff that we do.
We already have a drafted ordinance written up. Sergeant LaRosa and Ashley and all of us have worked on that over the last couple of months. It would help facilitate the process a little quicker and get it to the solicitor's office.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Yeah, I mean, I think it's time that we bring this to the 21st century for the township, and I think lots of people have experience using these apps now. I use Park Mobile in the city all the time. It's rather convenient, and to your point, their customer service is first-rate.
And we want to back that customer service up with our own and our records office. We have an individual down there, she primarily handles any parking issues complaints, and we try to handle it immediately. So we'd like to couple that with what we hear from Park Mobile.
Yep, makes good sense. Well, we thank you for your time and the presentation this evening. Before we open it for public comment, Commissioner Rothman indicated to me that he actually did have a few questions related to the second presentation, so we're going to allow that, and then we will pivot to public comment. As long as you're brief.
I'm sorry, you guys hate me already, but it's all right. So I misunderstood when you were talking about the whole slew of people that I thought more were going to come up, not just that they were here as needed. So I just had a few questions that residents had asked that I get a clear answer on before we're, before you're back, before the board soon. Some of it you mentioned, but I was a little unclear on. But in this most recent, call it close-to-final iteration, what is the footage, the feat of the buffer?
A hundred, well, the actual planted buffer or the actual setback?
Explain it however you want, that I can tell the people that are going to ask me tomorrow, I guess.
Yes, so let me see if I can go back to.
It's like four hot-button issues, really, that I think we're probably pretty good on, but the answers have changed over time per resident requests, and your communication with them, and I just want them to be as clear as possible, and I provide a summary.
Okay. So we have an exhibit that we had prepared, which shows you an example of the buffer line. So as I said before, the total setback area is 125 feet. We're required to have, in that 125 feet, a 40-foot-wide planted buffer, and then per resident request, we have shifted that back, and you will see that there is an 85-foot-wide green area shown on this plan, and then that 40 feet is behind the 85 feet, before you would get to, you know, we have drainage swales on this particular graphic behind that, and then houses. But it's 125 feet clear, 40 feet of planted buffer within that, and 85 feet of green area within that.
Okay. One of the items of discussion since this came up, I guess years ago now, was the cut-thrus, the desire for the residents don't want any of the streets within the new proposed property to cut through into either what's called the Crosswicks neighborhood or the Fox Chase Manor. Can you confirm that that's, there are no cut-thrus?
There are no cut-thrus.
One resident that's in attendance tonight in particular had brought up the location of the drainage basins. Where are they proposed specifically in this?
Go back to the site plan.
Quote-unquote "final" iteration?
So you will see, there are two basins that are towards the front of the site. They are both infiltration basins, and then there are three basins in the rear of the site. All five of the basins, there was some confusion at planning commission, all five of the basins will be naturalized basins.
The one that is, I guess, closest to Manager Man Freddy's head, point of reference, I guess it's the bottom left, which would be the one that's closest to Kirkwood?
So this one?
Yeah.
Let me get my arrow up. There we go.
All right. I think that's where, Vince, you're going to have a chance to talk, but I think that that addresses what your concern was last time, right? Yeah? I'm not really supposed to ask you right now, but saving time. Okay, so that's good, I want to make sure for him. And then, I got a bunch of emails today about traffic, and I know we do have traffic folks Have you done, is there any brief way of describing what at least your research shows as to the traffic impact once this project would be completed?
Sure, yes. So I'm going to bring up Sandy Coza, and I'll let her give you an overview of the traffic study information.
Sandy Coza from Bowman. We did the traffic study back when we were in the conditional use phase. So we did do traffic turning movement counts in the morning and the afternoon at the intersection with Manor College and the two adjacent intersections as well that are signalized. And then we layered on our traffic on top of that, as well as projecting it to the future growth, that we had numbers from PennDOT in terms of that percentage per year. So in terms of our trip generation, what we're looking at in the weekday morning was we were looking at a total of 53 total trips in that one peak hour, and that's entering and exiting. And then in the afternoon, we were looking at 61 total peak hour trips, again, entering and exiting. And then, as mentioned before, we are doing a full upgrade of the signal equipment at the intersection, and we are adding in our access as the fourth leg of that intersection. And we're doing upgrades to the curb ramps and the crossings in that area as well.
I mean, let's be honest, the emails I got were saying that there's going to be too much traffic once this goes through, right? And of course, I'm aware that your response to that would be, the study shows that it's not going to be that bad. You know, I've been through this, I was a lawyer working in the same chair as, was over there for 10 years.
Yes.
I guess, I don't know if you have, or if we could just get it for the next time we're all together, but something that would show the difference in that 53 trips in the peak hour in the morning compared to when it was a school? And then, I'm assuming that your enter-in-and-out afternoon one is probably not the same as the time that was the school congestion time, but I don't know if it is, or if you have that accessible. Again, my goal is not for us to be here all night, but it is to get the answers for the folks.
We actually do have that information, because we looked at the form art enrollment of the school when it was at its max of 400, but then we also looked at it when it was at the final enrollment in that final year, when it was down to 226 students. So we did look at that. The morning peak typically is the same, you know, for a school as for this type of thing, it's going to be sometime in between 7:00 and 9:00 o'clock. So according to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that type of facility was generating up to 149 total trips in the morning with the 226 students. And then in the afternoon, this is the four-to-six peak, it was generating 43, and that's not when the school would typically peak in the afternoon.
Right.
So that would be after it would get out, because schools typically peak between 2:00 and 4:00.
I think it's pretty fair to say, right, that there'd of course be more traffic now than the past few years when there was no school there.
Yes.
But that it's very similar to what it was back then.
Yes, and that was the last year. So at some point, they did have a peak enrollment of 400 students, so it was generating well above those numbers as well.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, like the residents that are concerned, I'm not thrilled about additional traffic there, but in my mind, I've thought of it as similar to when the school was at its busier point in time, and I guess certain things you've got to That is the, oh, there's one other thing, I guess I just wanted to throw on the record, Brian, I got your email about it the other day. There's a group of passionate former St. Basil students who would like to, when, if and when this happens, have some way of maybe getting some of the bricks that are not disturbed or contaminated, or whatever it might be, so that they can, I mean, it sounds like a heavy lift for them to organize the sale and all that kind of stuff, but if they want to do that, if we could throw it, you know, in some building and then they can do whatever they would like with that, I'd like to support them in that. I'm not sure, again, you can't, I probably can't promise, because things can break and stuff happens during the project, but I'd like that to be. like that to be something that we might be able to do to help these people who are reasonably emotional about the school's demise.
And if I understand, the request was to save some of the bricks and then they would use them, it sounded like as a resale, as a fundraiser or something.
Yeah, or maybe just, you know, maybe have one in their home or something like that, sort of nostalgia feature.
Nostalgia.
Yeah, I wasn't exactly sure. But I did say that I would, you know, bring it up to you folks about that.
Okay.
I believe this is my last question. If someone were to be moving, wanting to move in at the earliest point, when would they be looking at, so yes, I have some people that are very excited about the project, too. I wish they had called me at some point over the last few years, but we've made it there now. Two years from today, three years from today? I mean, obviously, you can't be held to anything like that because it might not even pass the board. But if it were to, that's the, that was one of the last questions I had my notes to answer.
Yeah, in like an ideal timeline, obviously, there's a lot more stuff coming next fall.
So since you're not on the mic, I will repeat the answer for folks online if there are any next fall is your answer.
Fall 2025.
2025, yes.
First, first units moving.
Year from, yes.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. I did want to get those questions out for the many people that emailed. I apologize that I totally missed it earlier.
It's okay. Oh, good.
Good?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll now open it up for a public comment on the three matters that were before the board this evening.
The Golemans and the Toles take an awful lot from our community. And they're not giving. They're going to bring enormous amounts of congestion, and we have that already. There will be more collisions. There will be more people hit by cars. And that's a given. And what are they offering? Nothing. Nothing. And they could, at this point, give more than they've given. We could get some land. Maybe not there. I would like it there because that land is beautiful, to save more of it. They're not offering it. The Toll Brothers have a lot of broken concrete around the shopping complex on London Road. It needs to be fixed. This is the great time to get it done, because I have a feeling after all this land grab is done, they're not going to come. The back area of the complex needs to be re-semended. It only got patchwork stuff going there. They need to resent, re-semment the back. They need to fix the concrete, and they need to power wash the sidewalks because it's filthy, dirty, especially where they are. And they should be making a donation. These are billion dollar corporations. The Goleman Group is asking for land.
The Goleman Group is not on this agenda, so we're not.
That's okay.
So we're not going to speak to that.
All right. I do see many people moving out. It's not two. It's not three. I saw four families in that section. Look, the house is up for sale, ready to go. Now, I find it ironic that I'm showing you photos that look like this today. And you are looking, it backs, and talking about 15 cents here and 15 cents there. This is a collapsed building. Nobody asked the address. Don't you think that should be something, Mr. Manfredi, you're interested in?
Ms. Cabell, do you have a comment about the plastic bag ordinance? We're not going to go through the photos again.
Yeah, this is about it. We have more important things.
Yeah, this is, that's not about the plastic bag ordinance.
Mr. Manfredi should be concerned that we have collapsing buildings.
Ms. Cabell, if you have comments about the plastic bag ordinance, make them now.
First of all, I have spoken to people in all these committees, and they're all very nice, and they give their time. And they have all said to me that what they talk about and what happens is dictated, is absolutely dictated. They could, they're talking about this. It's a dictated subject. I've asked them, can't you go and do this, not just this committee, but others? Can't help you there? That's, they're not, listen to us. These committees don't work the way they're supposed to. These are dictated subjects. I don't shop, Mr. Spiegelman in Abington, because this is what it looks like in Abington.
Ms. Cabell.
Big problem. This is more important than the plastic bags. It's ironic that you want to go back to plastic bags.
No, I want to stick to agenda items. That's what this public comment period is for.
Plastic is dangerous, yes. And it's going into our creeks because this convenience store lets it on Easton Road. Bags, I've told you, I went and looked, Upper Morland is already on the agenda. They got rid of the bags. Garbage is piling up in their streets, though, in Upper Morland, all around the Hokebo.
Ms. Cabell, Upper Morland is not on the agenda. So if you have specific comments.
This is about the bags. It doesn't work the way you claim it will work. It will not work. People will buy the bags. $40 for the bags, that's another expense. I am a middle class person. Food, housing has gone up. I am better off than most people. I don't want to spend $40 on those bags. I will have to because I use them in so many ways, like I've told you. I will have to buy the bags. I go through the neighborhoods because I'm finding a lot of collapsed houses. There's a lot of people who need a lot of help, and you're going to put bags on their agenda, too? Nobody should have to ask for bags because they can't afford them. That puts people in an awkward situation. Many people are elderly and handicapped. They should be given. Prices are that high. It's unaffordable. I know you don't realize that, because you're not where we are, and you're not where other people are, where they're having trouble paying the raising, the rising taxes. They're constantly rising here. People got a 12% increase. They've been talking about it in my neighborhood. Now are they going to pay it? These garbage heaps do not get better? The bag ban won't help. The bag ban won't fix the garbage that you don't care about. This is important. I show you garbage, you laugh. I show you it's been here for three years? Huh? Who cares? That is the, what I get from you. I am telling you, police officers are telling me, this is a dangerous community. The Golemans, the Toles, they're going to make it worse. We're struggling. People are dying. More of them have died, I believe, this year than ever before, or have been seriously injured in the past couple of years. No one thinks this is a bike safe community?
That's not on the agenda either, Ms. Cabell. Please conclude your comments.
Do you care, will I care about my? I want to ask you this. What's going to happen with this petition? Am I going to hear about this one? It's the fourth one.
Ms. Cabell, your time has expired. Please take your seat.
I'm coming here, and it's getting worse. You're abusing the citizens.
Please take your.
And making our lives harder.
Your, your time has expired. Please take your seat.
You should be embarrassed that you're on this board. It's an embarrassing board.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joe Rooney, I live in Ardsley. I kind of enjoyed this presentation, but it seemed like it's a little bit confusing to me. So we spent, I don't know, 30, 45 minutes talking about a plastic bag ban. And at the same time, there isn't any EAC questions, or any of you all have any questions about the development of 150 homes on 46 acres of St. Basil's. Maybe somebody could explain, maybe somebody could explain that to me about the envi, the environmental arguments for plastic bags, where you can demand people do something and behavioral changes, but you all worried about the environmental things of 46 acres and 150 houses. I have to admit, I miss St. Basil's. I think it would be a whole lot better if we spent our money trying to get St. Basil's back than building 150 houses on that. So that's just a little one. I call this fake environmental posturing is what it is. So I have a couple of questions right here. First, are the rain barrels plastic that the EAC puts out? Well, they are. It's rhetorical. And then we had, we all had private trash cans, but the township took all of my metal trash cans and threw them in the garbage with the last pickup. And then they gave everybody in the township plastic trash cans. So I don't understand how we're banning plastic bags, township's handing out plastic rain barrels, and they're handing out plastic trash cans. Then we have, we're going to use plastic containers, I think, to put old reusable bags in the grocery stores. These bags might have carried nails. They might have carried Calminor for fertilizer. And you expect people to then go to a store and use that bag to carry their groceries out with it. I mean, these are crazy recommendations. This is not well thought out. And like I said, it's not serious. So there's, there's all kinds of stuff. I love it how you use the word incentive when you mean penalty. So you're going to penalize people by charging them for a bag. And then the EAC presents it as we're making an incentive for people. Mr. Spiegelman says, what we need to do is we need to have behavioral modification. It's not your job. Just fix the roads, pick up the trash, help support the police. That, there's enough of that without worrying about behavioral modification. If the bag ban was so good, then I would ask this question. How many whales have been saved already since whoever, whatever townships, Philadelphia, New Jersey? Where's, how many whales have been saved? And I guess honestly, I was right. I wrote all you and said, why are they putting a presentation out with a fake picture of a dead whale? Well, we got them to admit that. But I'd like to ask, what else is fake in that presentation? What, what's, what's up with nanoplastics and my, it's always some threat that we can't see, we can't hear, and nobody has any idea about is the next thing that we got to worry about. So all of this stuff is fake environmental posturing. I get it. This is a political move for you all. You just want to do this because some other place has done it, you know? Philadelphia's banned the plastic bags. Is Philadelphia cleaner because of that? If we drive down to the airport and you go past the old refineries right there, do I see a cleaner Philadelphia from this? Is there anything you can point to that's, that's actually empirically there and say, oh, this is going to make it better? I think not. We could ask Mr. Jo, we could ask Mr. Jones, how is this going to infect? Is our waste stream going to go down? No, it's not going to. It's not going to be anything at all. What it does is, the plastic bag ban is, it impacts poor people, minorities, and elderly the most. It makes shopping less convenient or more inconvenient, which takes their time, and it makes it more expensive because they have to go buy something that they didn't have to buy before. I understand y'all don't care about that. But you should at least be intellectually honest enough to address that also. So it's pure politics. I like this. If anybody remembers the Borg on Star Trek, there was a sum, one of you all said, you will comply. But the Borg said, resistance will be futile. That's what it is. That's what you all are telling us. You're going to vote for this thing, and resistance will be futile. And then there's also the other thing in, from, from Hamlet, again, it's all sound and fury, and it signifies nothing. I have a lot more. I've spent already too much of your time. This is a bad idea. It's you pushing your pure left wing politics on the rest of the community. You can't convince people that it's a good idea. So you're just going to force them to do it. Thank you. Oh, well, I got 15 seconds. I have an idea, too, with the, with the parking meters. Get rid of them. It sounds to me like parking meters are there strictly to raise revenue. We can use our police to do real crime, okay? Two police officers were shot and lands down. This is how serious the police are. We're stopping bank robbers with our police. We're doing, we're stopping car trackers. Let's get rid of that. They're not into parking enforcement. Don't raise revenue with parking. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liz Carr. I live on Forest Avenue. And my question had always been prior to this meeting about the plans for the basins. But thank you, I did get images of that today. My question is, and I'm sure it can't be answered yet, but everyone I speak to who's lived near construction is, you'll see rodents coming up from the ground, mice, or hopefully that's worse of it. But I don't know, like, what, can we look to Toll Brothers for any mitigation strategies that we can employ to, you know, if there's mice coming into our houses as a result of this, is there something that you've dealt with in prior properties that has been successful? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Please come forward. Just give us your names, please.
Hello, everyone. Kathy and Tom Dwyer. We live in Hollywood. I'm here to speak specifically about the St. Basil changes that are going to be made. And first of all, it, it is, I'm hearing a lot of the specifics for the first time. So my, my questions are more in asking mode than anything else. There were a couple of things that struck me. One is, in Hollywood, I'm sure you all know that Huntington Pike, starting at 3:00, just backs up solid all the way up to, you know, Fox Chase. And, and when I heard about the traffic study, they seem to look at the adjacent intersections without looking to Huntington Pike, where everybody's going to be going to buy their groceries and going out to restaurants and doing whatever they're going to do. So it occurred to me, number one, have we looked at a traffic study that is comprehensive enough to really look at the community? But secondly, it seemed that the first proposal was for 110 single family room, or single family homes. This was modified to 150 over 50 population. Did we consider the difference in traffic patterns in, in that traffic study with going from one piece to another piece, where you may have some really significant differences? When we're talking about the school, you have Manor College. So you had kind of the two places that were kind of coordinated. Now we're talking about a living facility where people are going to be coming out, dining, grocery shopping, doing everything in our community. And I don't think, at least from the explanation, I don't know that we got that addressed. So I would like to bring that up. And, and it seems like the only thing we're going to need is an upgraded existing traffic light, which is kind of mind boggling if you're looking at it from our perspective, which this giant, you know, 150 unit is dropped from the sky in the middle of the neighborhood. It's hard to believe that the only difference that they'd have to comply with is an upgraded traffic signal that's already there. The second thing that I wondered about was the flooding. And you're having a lot less permeable land now that we're building houses and driveways and roads and everything in this piece. Now, we have these basins on either side, but there are certainly places in that area, and Tuckany Creek kind of goes along the one area there, where there has been flooding that's a result of building in those areas. And my concern is, by dropping this unit, cutting out a lot of the permeable area in that specific space, we're going to create flooding issues all around the area surrounding it. Clearly, you put, you know, 110 units, even over 55 units, who aren't maybe the biggest partiers. But there's going to be noise and pollution that results, as a result of having that contained group of people in that area. And we, we've been spoiled, you know, we, we have Alverthorpe, we have the horse farm, we have Manor College, we had these wonderful open spaces. And when we take one of those away and specifically densify the use of it, you're going to have, things are going to happen. It's, 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 it's there. Finally, what, what can we expect from a shift in tax revenue? What is the benefit to the township by permitting this change in, in use to occur? Because maybe, maybe some of that money, we're going to have to earmark for putting in new garages and new parking facilities and new roadways and other things that will have to be set up in 10 years, once we can no longer bear that. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? And if not, we'll turn to Zoom.
This is Laura Layman from Meadowbrook. Commissioner Hecker, you have changed the rules again, and allowed us to speak at the end, but not after each section where our, or, or I assume this is the end of the meeting. You did tell Mr. Rooney you'd get a chance to speak at the end of the meeting, which means that you're not going to go back and discuss these issues again? So we're not at the end of the meeting, or we are? Can you tell me?
This is the end of the meeting. I moved public comment to the end of the meeting following the presentation. following the presentations, so that any comment that the public wished would be made would be informed by what was actually presented this evening.
Yeah, so, so the question is, when are those decisions going to be made? That's the question. And if this is the end of the meeting, then, so, Mr. Manfredi said that depending on where this goes next, well, who's deciding that? Are you deciding that out of the public purview? You're not allowed to make decisions out of the public purview. They need to be in the public purview, okay?
The agenda setting happens on a monthly basis, Ms. Layman. You're actually incorrect about that. Mr. Manfredi, you wish to make a comment? You stop the clock.
The working session is the Board of Commissioners listening to the various issues and considering them here, asking questions, and President Hecker moved public comment from before to after at the very end, so that all of the agenda items that were in front of that, the public has a chance to comment on all of them. So, they do not vote at working sessions, so that there is more time for them to consider public input between now and next month's meeting. The agenda, based upon the discussions and what occurs at this meeting, when I, in my role as putting the agenda together, will consider all of the information that was presented at this meeting, and then will consult with the President when we're preparing the agenda for the next meeting. So, there are no decisions. It's really dependent upon what's discussed, what questions are posed by the Commissioners, what discussion occurs by those Commissioners, and what public comment is given related to each of those agenda items that determines when it will move forward next.
Thank you. Please resume.
So, as I understand what you just said, you're saying that your decision is going to be made out of the public purview as to where this is going to go next? And you have given yourself that with your, with your, the crazy chart that you made, and I have the actual words that you said that night, it was absolutely unbelievable, that you have allowed yourself with this circular firing squad to go anywhere you wanna go. And that's the problem. And then you said, "That's a clear process for every project." So, it's not clear if we don't know after this meeting where it's supposed to go next. You're deciding it. You're deciding it based on what you've heard at this meeting, but that decision is not being done in public. It's being done behind closed doors with just you and Mr. Hecker, apparently, involved in most of these decisions.
Ms.,
Stop the clock. Go ahead.
Ms. Layman, it is my responsibility to prepare the agenda for board consideration. The board does not make any decisions. It is my responsibility to prepare an agenda. The agenda has to be prepared somehow, and that's why you are here. You see what is on the agenda for them to consider. It's a responsibility. There's no decisions being made. No votes are taken outside of the public purview. The Board of Commissioners discuss everything, everything, in public. There are no, there's no nefarious plot anywhere.
So, the purpose of this meeting tonight was to decide where this is going to go. At the beginning of the meeting, you didn't know where it was going to go next, and you're saying it's your job to decide that, and you're listening to this comment at the meeting and making that decision? And in fact, Mr. Hecker mentioned several times about the decision that would be made, and this has been over the course of several meetings, where he looked at everybody else and said, "Shall we send it here? Shall we send it there?" That's a decision. And again, I asked at another meeting about the difference between your consensus decision and a vote, and it's being used to actually make these kinds of decisions out of the public purview.
That's just not true.
So, well, where this goes next, okay, should be decided tonight by the group of people that heard this, not by one person, okay, but by the group of people that heard the public comments. That's why our public comments are important. You're supposed to incorporate our comments into the work you do. And last time, you did the same thing, where we made our comments and then everybody left the room. We had no idea what you were going to decide. So, that is, that's not okay. What we need to do is hear the discussion on each item. We need to then give you our comments before you make any decisions. And the decisions need to be made in public, because the people's business is to be done in public.
Ms. Layman, check, all comments, all comments are being made in public, all discussions are being made in public, and all decisions will be made in public. So, we're checking every box that you just laid out, and really, there's nothing more I can say.
Nothing more to be said.
But you do realize that before you came, Mr. Manfredi, that an item went first to the committee, the code, the land committee. It was called Code Enforcement and Land Development Committee, okay? And then they decided if it was going to the Planning Commission and sent it to the Planning Commission. From the Planning Commission, it came back to the Code Enforcement, okay, who discussed that decision and decided whether it should go to the Board of Commissioners. It was, it was a clear process that everybody understood, okay? But now, the process is completely unclear, and you're deciding behind the scenes what decisions are going to, what direction this project is going to take. So, it matters. I'm not gonna belabor it here because
No, you have. Ms. Layman, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments. We are adjourned. We're gonna reconvene and finish public comment.
Ms. O'Neill, your microphone is unmuted.
Oh, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be quick. I just wanted to support, I'm an Abington resident. I've lived, actually grew up in Abington, moved back here about three years ago. I have a couple kids at the Abington School District, and I do support a lot of local businesses. And I just wanted to express my support for the plastic ordinance, mostly because I know, I mean, I think we all know, plastic is everywhere and is ubiquitous, and it's difficult to get rid of, and this is maybe just a small thing, but I feel like it's a small incremental change that the township can make. It's a good way to at least start reducing our single-use plastic, trying to keep it out of waterways, try to keep it from being ingested by animals and fish. I did, you guys were talking about the studies that have been done in Philadelphia and some of the other surrounding municipalities, and I did see that. In Philadelphia, a year after their plastic bag ban, the use went down from 64 to 4% of people bringing a plastic bag while, or asking for a plastic bag from grocery shopping. They're also estimating that they've saved more than 200 million single-use plastic bags, based on the ordinance in Philadelphia, obviously a larger municipality, but I do think that something like this in Abington could be a good incremental first step. It wouldn't be a huge impact on people, given that they're already using reusable bags for the most part, and it sounds like businesses will be on board with education and outreach and such. So, just wanted to express my support. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Tovin, your microphone is unmuted.
Okay, Mike Tovin, Kirkwood Avenue. I have a couple questions on the, on the timing of Toll. And Drew, I appreciate you asking the ones you did, but, and tell me if you wanna take this offline or not, Drew. Maybe you can get the answers or whatever. Maybe Toll can answer them now. If this gets approved, obviously, it's not gonna prove tonight, and, you know, nothing's gonna start tomorrow, but once this, is there a project timeline that once the approvals are in place, how long, once the approvals are in place, at what point do the bulldozers start coming in and demolition start? Is that 30 days, 60, 90 days? Like, you know, my house backs right up to it, so all the dust, noise, and devastation that's gonna go on, I'm gonna get it firsthand. So, I would like to just have an idea of what am I looking at as far as timing goes, on when would the demolition start? When would the construction start? And that's really all I got. As far as the, and I do wanna reply to the woman from Rockledge that was saying, there was 110 houses and then it went up to 150. One of the things early on that we had talked about, as, you know, a lot of the residents were on, 150 senior homes, 55 and over, would be less of an impact on the school district. It would be actually a 100% less impact on the school district than 110 single-family residents. That was one of the reasons why Toll actually gave us that option on that. So, that's just in response to that. There were some other things regarding traffic and all that stuff, but that was one of the main reasons. And also, the tax that's collected, the benefit, the tax that's collected from the seniors, they pay the school tax even though they're not typically utilizing it. So, there you go. So, Drew, or Toll, or somebody, could somebody explain the timeline, the construction timeline?
Yeah, Mike, I think that that's something that isn't determined right now, and I already just communicated with Brian from Toll that we can try to get an answer to that, even though there's no finite answer until and if anything is approved and goes through other processes.
But there has to be, there has to be a schedule, a tentative schedule. If they already know that fall of 2025, you know, people are gonna start moving in, there's gotta be a start date. If you know the end date, if you have an end date in sight, you gotta have a start date, right?
That comment makes sense. The, I believe what had been shared at some point previously was that it's about a year from breaking ground for the first to be completed, but I was thinking that you wanted even more of an answer than that, so I'll see if there is something like that
Okay.
that I could share with you.
Okay, very good. I appreciate it.
You got it.
Thank you.
All right.
Brad Turner here. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the vote on the inclusive playground. Really means a lot to the special needs community in Abington. My only other question is, with the Park Mobile, I understand it. I use it a lot in the city, down the shore, all of those places. My question would be, is if there is a way that we could maybe get Abington residents a discounted rate, as opposed to, like, I live right in Keswick Circle area, you know, I call them showbies. So, the showbies, if they would pay more than we would to go to O'Neill's for minutes, I just, I just don't see, you know, me paying $1.46 for the first hour when I'm using 10, 10 minutes of it to get bread, where they're spending, you know, three hours for a show and paying the same I am. So, just in consideration, those monthly or annually permits, they sound like a great idea, as long as it's kind of in favor for the Abington Township residents.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. We'll talk to Deputy Chief Porter about that.
Hi, this is Khaki Evans. I'm an associate member of the EAC, and I really appreciated the collaboration during the plastic bag ordinance. And as was mentioned by Ms. O'Neill, who said, called, talked before me, this is a light ordinance. I mean, Upper Marion recently passed their ordinance, and they included plastic spoons and forks and things like that. They also, getting back to Commissioner Martin's questions about education, I mean, I think the education is pretty simple. It's just alert people. Yes, it's important to tell them why this is happening, if it does happen, but for instance, Waste, White's Markets put up signs saying, "We're bagging plastic," and the ordinance required a two-month for all businesses, two months to give notice to their customers. They did have, in Upper Marion, also a way that, a process for businesses to, if they felt this was a hardship, but, or they gave a way that if you wanted to use up your existing inventory of plastic bags, you could. But, you know, I just wanted to, you know, I'm really proud that the twice that your Board of Commissioners, our Board of Commissioners, has passed unanimously some climate action proclamations. And, you know, just to, another way is that a single, just one single plastic bag is the equivalent of driving, of a car driving, in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, five miles. And, you know, talk about the health impacts and how this gets into the food chain. I think Ms. O'Neill really covered it, but, you know, just the health, you know, the health impacts in terms of cancer, cardiovascular disease, rheumatoid arthritis, I mean, all these things from plastic in the environment. I could go on and on. So, you know, I think this is, this was a really good discussion this evening, and, you know, for anybody to say that the EAC is posturing is just ludicrous. Our rain barrels were all from, they were all donated by local companies that used industrial food-grade drums, and we worked very hard, and basically, that's the source of our funding right now, if we do have to put funding. I mean, Upper Marion, actually, businesses were only too happy to have the cost of anybody who needed a bag, and, because it gave them a way to advertise their businesses that they were donating it. So, you know, they were giving them out at the Township Building, and I don't know if they still are, but I think there's a lot of great creative collaboration. And I just, you know, wanted to tell you that the EAC, these EAC folks, they really, really work hard. And I promised Ashley I would finish the climate action plan by the middle of next month, so the Township can apply for funding for charging stations. And, you know, I canceled. I was gonna go camping in Heavisay next week, but I canceled it. And we worked very hard, and for anybody to suggest that we're posturing, or that we're not transparent, as the same with you guys, that you're not transparent, I just really take issue with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Khaki. I think we have one more. Mr. Turner already spoke.
Yes, this is Rick Bruce. I live at 1023 Kipling Road. I'm in the Frostwicks Development Area. I'd like to, I have never heard a before-and-after comparison of going from the school to this 150 unit as far as effluent waste. I know, you know, obviously, we're gonna have public sewer connection, but also any inadvertent ground, you know, pollution due to, you know, the fact that you're gonna go from temporary student occupation to 24/7/365 residential occupation, and the fact that there's a stream running right through that area. So, I'd like to know more about the before-and-after analysis of pollution. Also, for those of us who are going to be impacted by the construction, there will be particulate, you know, this is a very old school. There will be particulates raised into the air and so on. I'd like to know more about what's gonna be done to manage the construction process. So, this is all about environmental impact.
We will make sure that you have answers to those questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wait, looks like we have one final resident.
Hi, I'm at 529 Berkeley Avenue. My name's Karen Milovich, and just some questions related to the environment and our township goals. I'm just curious if we're very, very concerned about the environment, why we're kind of overloading our township and overdeveloping it, bringing in more people, more cars, more trash, more pollution, et cetera. Also, I do want you to look to our New Jersey, who is actually finding they have more waste with the plastic bag ban, and agreed about the area of demolition on an old school, old pipes, that just concerned for the citizens in the area. Hopefully, someone has done some environmental studies in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will properly adjourn this time. Have a good evening. Have a good evening.